I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any board and committee reports? Does anyone go anywhere that we need to know?
Yeah.
We do have a public hearing tonight at 7:15 PM. We now have the town administrator's report.
Okay. It's been a busy couple of weeks since we last met. There's been a lot going on. And one of the first things I wanted to note is on November 4th at about 9:30 AM, I don't know if you're all aware, but one of the garage doors at the fire station, the mechanism that holds the 500-pound door failed and it came crashing down. One of the things that have done with our other buildings, the elementary school, the graves, and the library, was engage the services of DMF to do building envelope studies to take a look at, you know, what issues we might be facing. So I was thinking of having them come in, give me a proposal, take a look at that. It wasn't, it wasn't a lot of money. I want to say it was like $1,500 of the other analysis they did. So just so we'll know what we're dealing with as far as repairs or renovations. That particular issue-
It's always failed once before, I think, too, right?
I do not, not during my tenure. I don't, I don't know if it has. I do know that the regular maintenance was performed on that. So, you know, it wasn't-
Random, but-
There was nothing underneath it.
No, no, no.
No people, no trucks, not a thing, thank God, but-
I can just get to that.
Also, in conjunction with that, I'm seeking a proposal for designing construction for a pump station and forcing it to connect to the sewer system there.
Is that a given that we're gonna have to have a pump station? Or can the design-
I believe so.
But it still might-
All indications are that it will require one in that location. Also, I'm working with our conservation agent Doug Packer for opening up the Temple Boulevard right of way. We had started working on it about, I don't know, maybe two years ago, but it kind of got pushed to the side. So we did complete a request for determination and we'll be moving that project forward, anticipating that our DPW would do the work to get that opened. Sunco Eco Contracting is the company that's gonna be performing this sand narsion project for DCR down on the reservation terrace area. And they are gonna be using all the way to stockpile this sand for the duration of the project, which is expected to last probably two to three weeks. So just so you know, in case you get any calls about that, they are out there. We've received notification from Duty Calls. They're the company that's providing the pet waste disposal services on Plum Island, that they've been experiencing some abuses with their disposal units. So being filled with household waste and the likes. And I think I sent you some of the pictures. So I've notified the PD, they'll be up there again. We received a grant award, the cultural council received a grant award for $4,000. We also received a letter from our existing town council, Blatman, Fabrowski, Mead, and Tallerman, that they are going to be dividing amicably into two separate firms. So if we choose to continue our relationship, we are actually a client of, who would now become Mead, Tallerman, and Costa. That's who we were brought into the firm with that group. So that's something, you know, if, if that's the direction you wanna go, you'd need to take a vote and I need to notify them, or if you wanna consider it, you know.
Would you like an answer tonight or you want the full board?
They, they just said to let them know as soon as possible.
Time sensitive, you want it. So to clarify this for the board, because there's been a split in the law room, if we choose to stay with the firm that we went with, it would be now Lisa Mead.
Uh huh.
Who else?
It is now Mead, Tallerman, and Costa.
And Jay, who we have now, is gonna go?
With Mead, Tallerman, and Costa.
Oh, she, what's her last name? I always forget.
Kramer.
Kramer. So she'll be with that law room?
Yes.
That clarifies it, so there's really no problem, right? That Tracy is all basically the same.
Well, yeah, if, if you choose to stay, yeah.
Can they come under the same contract? Do we have to-
Uh huh.
Okay. So I would take a motion.
Motion to... How am I gonna say this? Go with the split with, say the names again, please.
Mead, Tallerman, and Costa.
Thank you.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also, our town council, Jenny Kramer, will be conducting an open meaning law seminar for all employees, boards, committees, on Wednesday, November 30th at 2:30 in the afternoon for the employees, or anyone really. And then again at 6 o'clock PM for those who couldn't attend the seminar during the day. We're gonna cover open meaning law, ethics, and conflict of interest. We do do this every few years. It's beneficial to us and our insurance premiums. We actually get credit for conducting these seminars. And when we have turnover on some boards and committees, it's always good to go through the regulations and go through the law, but also as a refresher for the rest of us. One of the things that came up as a result of the last town meeting we held, there were, I received a couple of emails from people being concerned about the counts and how they were contacted and whether or not they weren't sure if their vote was counted. And some people were standing and were just standing because they lacked a chair, not because they were necessarily voting in favor of one proposal or the other. So I had met with the town clerk and she'd done some research previously into handheld electronic voting systems. So she was gonna look into that a little bit more, get some information, and maybe the board would entitate a presentation on that at some time in the future. If something you have any interest in.
I think it's worth a look.
Yeah. And you can rest-
You see dollar signs as well.
It doesn't hurt to look, though.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
See what?
Doesn't, I like to see his dollar signs, but it doesn't hurt to look, as he said, so.
Yeah, yeah, so. For future reference, anyway. We also had our kickoff meeting yesterday. We're working with the Edward J. Collins Junior Center for Public Management. We had received a $35,000 grant award. We've, over the last couple of years, we've implemented a lot of financial management policies and the capital planning committee's done a tremendous amount of work on the capital improvement plan. But what we haven't done is we haven't finalized it into a complete total document and memorialized it through adoption by the Board of Selectmen as a, you know, a policy document. So we had our kickoff yesterday. We'll be working in the next few months on that. The hope is to have a final document by the end of March so that if there were any bylaw changes required, we could, we could have it in time for town meeting action.
So Tracy, you're kind of quiet about it, but it seems that there's a couple of grants there. I mean, so someone's, you know, working at $4,000, $35,000?
Uh huh.
So that's good?
Yep. The, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Municipal Modernization Act. It's recent legislation that's passed. It's basically updating a lot of Massachusetts general laws and that pertain to municipal, pertain to municipalities. It became effective, most of the components of it became effective as of November 7th. And one of them that's going to affect the Board of Selectmen in particular is a change that would allow you to appoint a member of the board. You would vote to appoint a single member who would have authority to take action on all payrolls and bill schedules. And then-
Now, that's gonna be all boards and committees?
All boards and committees, yes.
All of them, yeah.
All of them. Assessors, planning, yeah.
Already done, already signed it twice.
Yeah, yeah. So, so you'd need to appoint one member of the board to do that. And then at a subsequent meeting, that member would report back to the board on any invoices or payrolls that they had executed.
So that's gonna be the payrolls and any bills or anything, anything we use?
Uh huh, uh huh.
That's the board from this-
The Board of Selectmen, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So I don't know if you want to... I mean, Alicia, Damon aren't here, so maybe-
Who's not here? Frisk off your back, frisk off your back.
I'll take a, I'll take a motion.
Just kidding.
I mean, should the chair do that because of me and, you know, this one's more?
Sure, it's up to you.
Alright, so.
Would make sense.
Yeah, so I'll take a motion, guys.
Motion to approve, chef.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? And as soon as, you know, if I happen not to be chair, the next time I can be stood to, I'll be chair to take that off.
I also distributed a cable access policy document that you could all have an opportunity to read and I-
Does that have to do in the packet?
Uh, I had, I don't know if it's in this packet or not.
I think it was in there.
It was in there. For discussion at the December 13th meeting, I believe.
And what was it about? I'm kind of jumping.
One of the things that the new IT position is trying to do is promote information on our cable access network. So it's a policy document really encouraging participation of all our boards and committees to get more information through cable access, yeah.
In here tonight, we're gonna discuss, we need to, Comcast is actually asking us to-
I was wrong, that's what I was referring to.
And that's what I was referring to.
Okay.
So we'll get to this later. No reference to that.
Okay, and the only other thing I wanted to mention is a reminder that your meeting schedule for December is a little unusual. We're meeting on a Wednesday night, December 7th, and that meeting is gonna be held at the Morgan Ave Fire Station. And then we'd be meeting again on the 13th.
And the 7th is gonna be what? To roll with some of the findings of the report that we had, yeah?
We recently commissioned a report, consultants who have provided us with a report relative to all of our existing fire apparatus.
Yes.
So they'll be giving that presentation.
Good, so that's the reason for that meeting.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Tracy, thank you.
I think that's a lot.
We'll head into, it's a little bit of new business while we're waiting for a couple hearings. One-day liquor license, Rochelle Joseph, Support the Pink House, Pitter Hall, Plum Island. And it is Thursday, November 17th, 2016, from 6:30 to 10:00 PM. Would you like to talk about it at all?
Sure.
Just, that's good. That way you can drum up a little business. Would you stand right there, Rochelle? You picked up.
So, I'm thinking we're gonna have our first little fundraiser, which is turning out to be bigger than we expected. There'll be, all the local painters and photographers who, you know, take the Pink House as their, their muse, have donated at least 30 paintings for auction. There will also be some local artists who are gonna be selling, you know, cards and various things for Pink House related. And we also have an auction table, I mean, I'm sorry, a raffle table that has some really, really great stuff for both men and women. Things varying just for $50. Get certificates to start a theater tickets, to paint mold jewelry. And we've got food also from everybody from Choppico is making a Pink House moon pie for us to pass around, dancing dairies. You know, a lot of, everybody, Newbury Brewery is gonna be doing a tasting of all their craft beers. And then the cottage and some people have donated some wine. We've got Market Basket giving us cheese crackers and, you know, all our stuff. So for all of that, and so we have to get a liquor license. I thought they had one there, but learned about this. So I went and got all the right paperwork. But it's gonna start early, around 6:30. And we are probably gonna end the auction around 8:00, 15:00, depending on how many people are there so that people can actually pay and go and people win raffle tickets if they're there and win the raffle items, rather. So appreciate your giving us the liquor license.
Great. Alan, everything in order?
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. See you then.
At 7:15, which it is now, we do have a public hearing for the determination of the percentage of the tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for fiscal year 2017. So I would take a legal notice, yeah.
In accordance with Chapter 369, Acts of 1982, Section 1, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Newbury will hold a public hearing on the determination of the percentage of tax levy to be borne by each class of real property for fiscal year 2017. The hearing is to be held on Tuesday, November 15th, 2016, at 7:00 PM at the Newbury Town Hall offices, 12 Kentway, Whitefield, Mass., on 9/22.
Right. Can we have a motion open?
Yep. Do we need that? Motion to approve the public hearing.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The purpose of the classification hearing is for the Board of Selectmen to determine the allocation of the local property tax to be borne by the four classes of real property, which are real residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and Class V, which is personal property, for fiscal year 2017. In deciding the allocation, the Selectmen must adopt a residential factor. The residential factor is used to determine the percentage of the tax levy that is applied to each class of real and personal property. The Board of Assessors applies these percentages to the individual property classes according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 56. And it is the responsibility of the assessors to provide the Selectmen with relevant information and to discuss the fiscal effects of possible alternatives. So I had listed some information about 2017, if you would like to read about that, and some updates on the growth and our tax levy. I have a report for you, if you'd like to turn to page five, the tax rate. The tax rate is the tax levy divided by the town's taxable valuation. This is known as the uniform or single tax rate. Under this rate, each class of property pays a share of the tax levy equal to its share of the total town value. The tax rate used in this report is fiscal year 2016 tax rate of $11.40 per thousand. And the reason for that is because fiscal year 17 tax rate is paying the Department of Revenue's approval. So we are not going to use that rate yet. The residential factor adopted by a community governs the percentage of the tax levy that is to be paid by the residential property owners. A residential factor of one will result in the taxation of all property at the same rate, which is a uniform tax rate. However, the law allows commercial, industrial, and personal property, CIP, tax rate for the Town of Newbury to be as high as 50% above the uniform rate and the residential open space to be as low as 65% of the uniform rate. Historically, Newbury has always maintained a single tax rate. Shifting the tax onto commercial, industrial, and personal properties would create a tax burden for those properties, while the residential properties would only benefit from a small savings. The total valuation for the town is comprised of 95.7% residential and 4.3% commercial, industrial, and personal properties combined. The residential exemption requires a vote. The Board of Selectmen may adopt an exemption of up to 35% to shift the residential class burden from lower assessed properties that are the principal residents of a taxpayer to higher assessed properties and properties that are not the principal residents of a taxpayer. To see the impact of this exemption, if you take a single-family home, fiscal year 17, single-family home assessed at $479,372, and you calculate the taxes for the year, those yearly taxes will be $5,464.84. With the 35% exemption, the assessed value would drop to $332,466. However, the tax rate would jump to $17.54, making the yearly taxes $5,831.45, which is actually $366.61 higher than no exemption because the assessed value goes up, but the tax rate goes up.
We don't do that.
The assessed value goes down, but the-
That's why we don't do it.
But the tax rate goes way up. Therefore, therefore, the Board of Assessors has consistently recommended that a residential exemption not be adopted. It places an unjustified additional burden to the other residences. So you'll have to take a vote on that particular option.
So you would like a motion that the residential exemption not be adopted?
Not be adopted.
So I would take that, so move.
Second.
Is there any discussion by my board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Classification.
And there's more. You were waiting.
Just one more. The Board of Selectmen may shift the town's tax burden from the residential class to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes as long as the shift does not exceed the minimum residential factor. This means the burden cannot be shifted more than 50%. And if you turn to page eight, we have a spreadsheet. And if you actually go to the bottom of the spreadsheet, it's where you really see the impact of these numbers. If you take that same single-family house assessed at $479,372, if you were to shift the burden onto commercial properties by 10%, the saving to that single-family home for the year would be $25. However, it would put a burden of $546 for a commercial business assessed for $479,372. If you were to shift the rate by 25%, the saving to the residential home would be $61 per year, but it would be a burden of $1,366 to a commercial property. And if you were to shift the rate by 50%, it would be a $123 savings to the residential property, but a burden of $2,732 to the commercial property because the commercial section is so small as opposed to residential. So after taking a look at those numbers and the burden that it prove, the burden that it places, the Board of Assessors is unanimous in its recommendation to retain the uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2017 with a residential factor of one. And that would require a vote as well.
So we are entertaining the thought of keeping a uniform. Tax rate was a residential factor of one. And that would be the motion by my board?
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Is part of this tool that we've discussed says little commercial, Rochelle?
Yes.
It would be very different if it was more evenly weighted and then we'd be looking at-
Exactly. We could take some of that, that's right.
Even Newbury Port keeps a uniform starting to drop. Even Newbury Port sells a uniform.
So it means that really has to be-
It helps promote, it helps promote commercial growth, so.
Thanks.
And just one more vote. Selectmen should sign the LA5, but also take a vote to allow authorization for town administrator Tracy Blaze to sign the LA5 electronically on the Department of Revenue's gateway system on your behalf.
So then you have a motion.
Alright, so we need a motion to accept or adopt the LA5 and allow the authorization of our town administrator Tracy Blaze to sign that electronically when needed.
Yes.
So I would take a motion.
Thank you for second. Motion, so move.
Is there, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very, very, very well done. Thank you so much.
Rochelle, please, a quick question. Where is the conservation machine?
The library.
Sorry.
Thank you also for signing that tonight.
That was a lot of work, putting all that together. Wow.
Great illustration of how unbalanced the-
Very interesting.
With something?
Amazing.
Imagine you showed your business in town.
Water and sewer. Yeah, so. Ready? If I have my bearings, am I on the one-day liquor license for Leslie R. Dalek? Newbury Port High School, 2006, class, 10-year reunion, Pitter Hall, 8 Plum Island Boulevard, February, November 25th, 2016, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. Is everything in order, Alan?
It is.
Is she here tonight?
She is.
Do you wanna say anything really quick about your tenth reunion?
No.
Trust me, they keep going very quickly.
Sure.
I know, at 70 years old.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Good luck.
Thank you so much. We have an appointment, we have a change. We have appointment of the zoning board of appeals. We have an alternate member, is Elaine here tonight? Elaine Baker? And I'm gonna ask Tracy, because I don't quite understand this, I don't know if the board does. We're gonna move Elaine to a member status for, to June 30th, 2017. How come it's not longer? Does anyone know? Is it just the way-
That's when her appointment expired.
Yep.
Okay, good. So she'd have to be appointed again. Okay, and it is to fill, an old friend of mine, Rick Salmons, who has been on for quite a few years.
I guess.
Yeah, Ricky was, Ricky was my, Ricky was my college roommate. Dear Board of Selectmen, after careful thought and consideration in resigning from the zoning board of appeals due to a family business and its commitments, it has been my sincere pleasure to serve the town on this capacity for many years. Sincerely, Mr. Richard Salmons. So I would entertain a motion for the appointment of the alternate member.
So move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Can we also make a motion to send a letter to him? Thanks.
Make, articulate that nice and loud. Say it loud.
Motion to send Rick send a letter with thank you for all those years of service. Second.
And I think that's great, too. I will throw it in. So any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Mike here? Good. Mike can probably illuminate this a little. We have an appointment and the appointment was added to in the amendment to this. And it's gonna be Nathan Hunter for the emergency communications personnel, 11:15, 2016, to 6:30, 2017. Daniel Jenkins, full-time patrolman, 11:15, 2016, to 6:30, 2019. And Jason, how do I say it? Takuna, full-time police patrolman, from 11:15, 2016, to 6:30, 2019.
Motion to approve, all.
So that's good. You don't even have to talk, chief. All good, all good guys, right?
They're great guys. Nathan is here.
They're good.
Sitting up back.
Good to see you.
Well, I have your attention just for a minute. One thing that I neglected to mention at the last selectmen's meeting, the Newbury Port 5-Cent Savings Bank gave the police department a $4,000 grant for training room furniture for the hall. Now we can use it as a training room. The guys are thrilled about that.
Nice.
So I really wanna extend our thank you to the Newbury Port 5-Cent Savings Bank for the generosity and-
And maybe we, are you writing a letter? Maybe we should write it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I would write a nice letter. And any furniture that we purchase with that grant, if we move to a new facility, will be transferred over, so.
Super. And guys, that's $4,000, that's $4,000, and that's $35,000. So that's quite a few grants since the last time you did your town administrator report. Not bad, right?
Wow. Back to him. Daniel Jenkins, that's the same officer we've had, correct?
Yes, the two full-time appointments, they've been reserve officers for a couple of years.
I never knew his first name, so.
Yep, they're just stepping up to fill in the voids left by the two that left. Excellent. Thank you.
You made a motion, John. Motion to approve, second.
Yep. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don, do you want to speak about what you're doing?
Sure.
And you want permission in the form of a motion to put the wreaths on the graves? You want that tonight, right?
Yes, and.
Come on up, come on up.
Explain the whole thing?
Yeah, you can, no, you can lay it out. So everyone, because you're going to be asking for some donations to help you with your project, so this is a good opportunity to talk about it.
So last year I started the, I have Kino, Weetacost America, to provide wreaths on the veteran graves in town. I'm sorry. We raised money through these wreaths to help maintain the graves going forward and buy flag holders. We're doing the same thing this year. Last year we started with the goal of fifty, we ended with one fifty. This year we're going to go at two hundred, and we're at one fifty as of tonight, and I still have checks in the mailbox I haven't picked up yet. So I'm sure we'll hit those goals. So I need permission from the board to place the wreaths on the veteran graves, as well as the ability to place the ceremonial wreaths at the cemeteries throughout the town. Last year I did it at a monument, but I think I'm going to do it at the cemetery, so people can actually see the ceremonial wreaths this year. Also, I'm taking it one step further. I'm working with local businesses to kind of generate the funds to buy the wreaths, and Colby Farm is actually donating two decorative wreaths, which will be placed on a bridge, the bridge on Route One over Parker River, and those are going to be in memory of the veterans we lost at sea from Newbury. I think it'd be a nice little added touch this year. As you drive by, you can see the wreaths, and be in honor of those guys. I have nine different businesses in town that have joined us together, including Domino's, who's putting flyers and pizza boxes, two local banks, so it's kind, it's getting bigger. I hope in the future we can do a wreath for each veteran grave, but I think in the two years we've kind of developed a good program here in town that I think we're building time. And it kind of takes the pressure off of me trying to get funds to maintain these graves throughout the summer, because it gets costly.
And you've done a great job, especially on the first parish, you know, that was okay. When that was totally overgrown.
It's, it's getting better. I'm actually meeting with the church and taking the project to the next step. And I have experts now that have worked with me to do stone resetting. We've already done one so far, and we're going to hopefully take it to the next level and start doing a bunch of them.
Wow, some of them are pretty heavy.
It's a lot of work.
Well, some of them are old.
Yeah, we had a.
You can bring my crane, and lift a couple of them, and we'll sell it by Field Cemetery.
Yeah, we, this, this lady has twenty-two years of experience doing this, and she bought a huge twenty-foot tripod.
Yep.
And we stood up in Mazique, is that what they call it, the town?
Yeah.
It took three hours.
Yeah.
But it was nice, it was a pretty cool experience, and it's been saving the church a lot of money, so I hope we continue that in the years to come.
So you would like a message, you would like a motion from us for whatever our permission can generate through the ability to put these on some of the graves?
Yeah, on December, so on December seventeenth, they'll be placed on the veteran graves in town. There's permission from the board.
All right, so I would take a motion, guys.
Want to allow wreaths on veterans' graves in the town, or?
They'll be picked up in January and disposed of with a bonfire.
Great.
With permission from the.
Super.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much. Thanks. So this past weekend, I had, I had no choice, I had to take them all to Boston to dispose of them. They did a big thing in West Roxbury. Today, I collected over twelve hundred flags.
Goodness gracious.
I entered it yesterday, it was full.
That's amazing.
That's amazing.
It's impressive.
When did they get rid of them? When they take them to Boston, what do they do?
So we did a, the West Roxbury Boy Scout, they do an annual Veteran Day Flag Spoil of Ceremony. They had ten fifty-five gallon barrels that we did a burning ceremony with, and they had fifteen thousand, and I brought the twelve hundred. So we were burning from nine in the morning to three in the afternoon.
Good.
I would eventually look at doing that here on a much smaller scale, obviously. Maybe around Veterans Day and kind of doing our own thing as a community, since we have a response for this box.
We used to do that one time about years ago.
I've talked to the fire department, it's been so dry here.
Yeah.
So maybe in the future it won't be a problem, but it'd be nice to do it here in town. What do you guys think?
Thanks for all your work.
Awesome.
Thanks, guys.
Awesome.
Have you permission?
The next one, we're going to need a motion or a vote to approve a mortgage discharge for the property located on a hundred High Road. It's a separate loan, and it was paid in full on ten sixteen. Martha, I can remember doing these, where did, how did that come through? Was it through the planning board, getting funding, hundreds?
No, I don't think so.
Waterhouse.
I wasn't here when they did it, but I.
But it was nice, there was a program that needed that, there was a program, and now people are finishing paying those off. So we need a motion to approve the discharge.
Double, double, yeah. Motion to approve the discharge, this is second law.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Old business, is there any old business?
One thing. I had a family issue come up. I could not make my call yet, so I want to reschedule to the Saturday at nine A M. And if anybody was there that showed up to a locked door and cannot make Saturday, reach out to me through the town website on the email, and I'll make personal time for you, either of my residents or yours or neutral site.
Thanks. Any citizens concerned? Martha or Mike? We have correspondence, and I will let Martha take over on this one. I kind of read it, and it's really boilerplate, right? Or is there anything that's significantly out of sorts for something that isn't boilerplate, except for the concerns of the town and the residents, right?
Yeah, I think it's pretty.
This is on the forty B, excuse me, forty B eligibility site approval for Byfield Estate, Pasing Drive.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's pretty boilerplate. They, they did reiterate some of the concerns that the town had expressed as things that needed to be taken into consideration in their application or during the process. But basically, right now, what we do is just wait until they submit an application, and that will go through the Z B, be submitted to the Z V A, and.
That process starts.
That process will start when the application, the Z V A did adopt rules and regulations for forty B, so they're all set, and.
Now, where we have such little forty B in our town, do these things usually take a year, year and a half?
Oh, hard to say.
It's hard to say. I think it depends on, you know, the, the amount of information that they, they provide, how many questions there are, discussion on any conditions that the Z V A may feel appropriate. It'll go through review of all the town boards again, so we'll see what happens. But Paul Haverty had said that usually once the eligibility letter is issued, it'll take a couple of months before the applicant submits, because now they actually need to put their application together.
Right, so.
So we'll just wait.
And then we have a lottery that provides the six houses and the other houses are to be built for sale.
Right, they'll be market rate houses, yeah, so six will be affordable. And so those applications will go to the, the applicant, the developer. And they did, did say when they submitted their first site application, that they would have seventy percent of local preference.
Four of the houses would be the local. Good. All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Martha.
We have, next under correspondence, we have a letter that came on ten twenty-five sixteen from Mass. D O T, and it was kind of interesting to me when I read it, because I never thought about it, but it makes sense. And I imagine this would, Tracy, have to go to the highway department just to make sure, and what it is is salting at the commuter rails. I probably aren't going to reach right to it, but the three of them that are exposed, has anyone got it open in their packet? Yeah, Hay Street, I got it, Boston Road and Hanover Street. It seems when we apply road salt to those crossings, the road salt mixed with the water from the storm becomes conductive and can cause the gates to close and stay closed until they come and I guess fix them. So I guess we got to let the highway department know right in that area to kind of minimize the salt, I guess. That's what I got out of that. What did you get?
Yeah.
Same, so.
Ellen's already.
It's already up to speed.
Yep.
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, now this one maybe was not so crystal clear. We also received a letter on ten twenty sixteen from Comcast, and maybe this is done, you know, are you looking for the conservation mission meeting, and you know you're going to be not happy? It's in the library. You're welcome. And it's from Comcast, and it's a commencement of the renewal process. Did you get a look, chance to look at that one?
It's been forwarded on to the media committee, and we've also sent it on to town council. Generally speaking, when you do a contract renewal, you would in all likelihood engage an attorney who specializes in this to negotiate on our behalf, because it's definitely outside of my area of expertise.
Can you hear that ring? Wow. The next one I probably think has something to do with the prior, but it is also received on ten nineteen sixteen, and it's from Infinity, and it's about, it seemed everything decreased.
Seems everything was within a block.
Yeah, so it'd make us feel good about real good.
Right.
Anyway, for anyone that would like to see any of this correspondence, it's available at the Selectmen's office. So next is a review of the meeting minutes. If you guys get a chance and take a motion to accept?
Yeah, motion to second.
Is there any discussion or any changes? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants, we'll have a motion on the warrants.
Motion to sign warrants, second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting updates? Anyone? Executive session, hearing and seeing none. I take a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
Should we discuss it? All those in favor?
Aye.